Welcome to the Biloxi City Council meeting of Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules? Motion by George Lawrence. Do I have a second? Second by Paul Tisdale. Do we have someone to do the invocation? Do I have a volunteer to give the invocation?
Sure, I'll do it if you like.
Am I not in the mic loud enough?
If you would bow, please. Oh God, when I have food, help me to remember the hungry. When I have work, help me to remember the jobless. When I have a warm home, help me to remember the homeless. When I am without pain, help me to remember those who suffer. And remembering, help me to destroy my complacency and bestir my compassion. Make me concerned enough to help by word and deed those who cry out for what we take for granted. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Guines, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Now I have a motion to suspend the rules by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Rules are suspended. Lucy?
To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5K, resolution authorizing entry into grant of access waiver of liability for the agreement with Howard Avenue Development. We're substituting item 5M, the Exhibit A only, concerning the resolution for volume licensing agreement with Dell Incorporated. We are substituting item 5R, resolution authorizing change order number four for the construction agreement with Lane Construction. And we're adding item 5S, resolution authorizing entry into an agreement with Nick Clark Auctions for disposal of surplus municipal property.
Thank you, Lucy. Got a motion to move the agenda?
Second.
Second by... Motion to move the amended... The agenda is amended by George Lawrence, seconded by Paul Tisdale. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Mayor, your report.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. We welcome everyone to our first month of the end of the FY 2020 meetings. Again, I thought the workshop and the questions today in our budget hearing was, you know, I think very good. And my thought that we're moving forward in the right way. I do want to thank the governor for coming down here and laying our wreath at the Katrina Memorial. I think it was a nice ceremony. I think Councilman Tisdale and Lawrence, we did that and we had a very good visit with the governor. And again, thinking about Laura and some of the things we, you know, we feel for those folks that are suffering right now in Louisiana and Texas. So, and one other thing too. This is September is the childhood cancer month. So it's a... It's very... It's something I think we need to keep everyone who has issues or has, you know, family with the childhood cancer. It's a proper thing to do. And prayers go out to those folks who are struggling through that childhood cancer. Well, yeah, we'll tell them about the $2 million. But this is the... We got the final, as a result of, I think, our meeting with the governor, the final $2 million of funding for the new main gate. And actually, the last... We were notified today that the $2 million will be awarded. So that brings us up to, you know, the completion of the outside the gate work on Division Street. So we're very fortunate that's going. So working on Sangar. I think that'll be a pretty good two hits that we'll get hopefully within the next few days from both of them. But I do... Did I forget anything else? Other than, you know, we want to spread the expenses of Biloxi Travel Credit Card to the minutes. Always use that and forget it most of the time. But I think that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll begin council reports. Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank Christie Labata and Mary Williams. Both are city engineers. They met with residents in Ward 5. We're working on a drainage issue and they met with probably 14 or 15 residents in the neighborhood. I appreciate them taking time after the normal course of the workday to meet with those residents. Do you have a question? I know we've got the crews in the coast. We've got the block party. And are we doing... I know it's a lot of people in several blocks here in downtown. Are we doing anything that we don't typically do given the virus related to that event?
We've been trying to spread it out a little bit more, but it's tough to do that. But I think we had a couple of meetings, Chief. I think that we're going to do our best to ensure that. But maybe with some channeling of where people walk and that sort of thing. But I think we're hopeful that we can work it out and hopefully that the conditions will be better by that time.
We got a mention?
Chief?
We are. And the teams, I think, are going to be a good idea. And what they'll do is just go throughout the crowd, see people getting too close. So just remind them, tell them they need to put on a mask. If they're not wearing a mask, we'll have masks available naturally. Usually, the big crowd is out here. We're going to try to space that crowd out as much as we can. We'll try to space the vehicles out a little further than we usually do. And then, you know, we're hoping people are going to abide. I know that Woody Bailey is putting that in all his paperwork. He's letting them know that these things, these rules are going to be in place. So I think it'll be successful and hopefully people will abide by the rules that we put in place.
Just take those precautions that are reasonable under the circumstances.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. One other thing I'd just like to announce again. I have a ward meeting scheduled for Monday, September 14th. That's at the Snyder Center. It'll be at 5:30 PM. Typically, they last about an hour, an hour and a half. Sometimes they get pretty exciting, too. And this meeting, of course, is open to the public, not just people who reside in Ward 5. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Lawrence?
I tell you, it's hard to believe it's been 15 years since Katrina hit. And watch what happened in Louisiana. To think that thing made the right turn going west, could have hit us again. And we just getting back. You know, that poor camera, now there's nothing left in there. That's a little fishing town. It's right at the... It sits right on the Gulf. I mean, I think we're just totally destroyed. You got to send your prayers out to these people. Yeah, they all gone through exactly what we did 15 years ago. The hot weather, nothing, no refrigeration, no heat, no air, no nothing. Eating out of an ice chest in the Salvation Army with the hot dogs, which is pretty good. When you're hungry, the hot dogs taste pretty doggone good. So it's hard to believe that 15 years ago, we were doing what they doing. You have to think, thank the Lord that we got to survive so far. It's not over, it's the season. They studied farms out there. We just hope they just bypass it again. So that's a good thing. And to be... What y'all did sadly, you and the governor, I don't know how many stops he make. He went to Keesler. He was in Gufford, their aquarium. He was in Wavlin. He was in Petrusland. I mean, that's moving pretty good. Did you make all of them or he just went?
No, he just went. We took him through Keesler and took him, you know, around sort of Sangar, saw the Division Street and the houses and so forth. That was a really, really good opportunity, too. You know, like I said Saturday, he was... He's shown to be, you know, a friend of the coast time and time again.
Yeah, it's a good thing for him to represent the state of Mississippi and to be on the coast as much as he is. That's good for us. That's all, Robert.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Barrett?
No report.
Councilman Guines?
Yeah, I was just glad to hear... First of all, I was just glad to hear about the $2 million. Wasn't it, just to the mayor, wasn't it about five that we were looking at initially when we got to 25 million?
Well, it's 37. Well, it was five million, but it didn't, you know, inside and outside. The last go around, we were able to shift that $5 million. A lot of it was shifted from the work that we did, the work that we were able to shift from inside to outside because they were under budget. I think it's about $2 million. Yeah.
$2 million.
So that knee case performed, that work that was originally of that, it would have been $5 million short. But we were able to save that and repurpose that, the rest of that budget.
The outside gate job is out the bid right now.
Okay.
And the plan holders list shows that there's a pretty good interest number of companies that have picked up the plans. So we're hoping that if somebody's hungry, the original outside gate project is funded with three increments of $5 million each. $5 million, next year $5 million, and then another $5 million.
And we realized that by the time we went underground with utilities, that 15 wasn't going to do it. And we sent out a Hail Mary and the governors come through with another two.
Let me say, you know, two, the extraordinary things was the amount of, you know, easement we had to acquire. So that was about $6 million, which we originally, you know, kind of underestimated that. But then the $2 million worth of underground wiring was... We stressed that it needed to be a showplace and I think that was what was used as a gauge. So the $2 million for underground is well worth it. It's going to be a boulevard. I think that's what everyone will pay attention to.
Thank you, Mayor. And then I want to thank Christie for giving a date on that project. So I appreciate that. I need Monday, annual meeting with myself, Mayor and Walt to finish up some of the road projects we were talking about. I want to just kind of commend some of the aid groups. You know, we had some food giveaways starting in April. And every two weeks, we gave away fresh produce. And I want to commend Wells Fargo on giving away food, the SNAP food program. And they're going to be doing it a couple of weeks. And then we have another group. Once they get through, going to be doing some good food giveaways in the community. And we know there's a need in the community with, you know, amongst the pandemic. So I want to commend those groups that are out there doing good. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Glavin?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to just start off again thanking our educators and teachers. Report cards and progress reports come out this week for the elementary kids that have been just, I mean, everyday heroes. Those teachers and the students wearing those masks, trying to learn through difficult situation. And speaking of October, we've had several groups and events kicking... Or not October, coming up in October. And also this past weekend, I'll start with this past weekend. The Neptune Poker Run commenced this weekend. There were some that wanted to cancel it. But, you know, we're not a perfect community by any means, but we're certainly a resilient community in trying to find that balance. Like to thank the mayor, Mike Leonard, our established, and the crew down at the harbor under difficult circumstances, receiving the boaters as they came in and as they finished off that event. So thank you for that. Upcoming, we have Tunnels to Towers. It's still on. I've spoke to the organizers. They want to get with the city on some barricades. They're working through their social distancing plan. And we're doing things different on how they do the run. They used to go over the bridge. They may want to run down toward the lighthouse this time instead of over the bridge and up and through the towers of the hotel. Cruising the Coast is definitely on. I think we have 700 new registered cars. In addition, we're almost at the same levels. We're not too far off at this point in time of the cars that are registering. So that should be a great event. I'm sure they're going to be wearing their masks. We see that more and more with our tourists and our visitors where a few months ago, they weren't wearing masks. They were resisting that a little bit. Now almost everyone that walks into the hotels are wearing those masks and they're complying to what our city officials are telling them that they need to do. And then Legends Hotel will be opening October 1st. That's full go. You would think during this pandemic, there'd be a big risk on new businesses or hotels opening. So it's good to see those businesses that are still proceeding forward. And the housing market seems to be as strong as ever, you know, through this pandemic. So those are good signs, some silver lining stuff. We're certainly not out of the woods. There's a lot of jobs that we're losing and there's still a lot of revenue that we're missing. But eventually, I know, you know, we'll get that all straightened out and it'll come back. So that leads me to one more thing. As you know, I've been reporting in these council meetings during my report about real men wear pink. And it's been a... I mean, I've been engaged with this fundraising. I've participated with fundraisers in the past, but somehow this one has kind of tugged at me a little bit more. And I've made a lot of emotional connections during this progress in just one month. I want to thank again the council members that have donated. Councilwoman Newman recently donated, so I appreciate that. Among others, Nathan Barrett, Paul Tisdale, the mayor's wife, our first lady, Mike Leonard, Peter Abide. And if I missed anybody, I apologize. But it's... Our campaign has really taken off really good. And I know others have committed. Y'all have been busy with some initiatives of your own. And I would hope that you at least donate $5 to this cause. So with that, I'd like to yield the remainder of my time to Lawanda Jones. She's the Community Development Manager for the American Council Society on the Gulf Coast. If y'all would welcome her and give her an applause, please, Lawanda.
Thank you, Councilman Glavin, for having me here. I'm like, as you can tell, I'm very excited because we have 29 real men who have just propelled the Gulf Coast. And when I say propelled, we are number two in the nation. Number two in the nation. We're going up against people in California, Pittsburgh, and Chicago, and we're number two. And then making me even more happy because I'm very excited for Kenny is that Kenny and Kevin both are in the top 10 of the nation. They are singing the praises. They are getting the awareness out and they're letting them know what the impact is in regards to breast cancer. And I thank all of y'all who have supported them, who are supporting this program. And I also want to let you know, and hopefully the city of Biloxi will be on board, but we are trying to host on October 15th, a Power of Pink, where we are going to celebrate and remember and honor our cancer warriors. And what we're going to do is we want to be able to set out what they call luminary bags on the stairs of City Hall. And simultaneously, the city of Gulfport, city of Ocean Springs will do this all on the same night from 6 to 8 and people will be able to drive by. And you'll be able to get those bags for $10. You'll be able to get the bags and we're going to get those bags decorated and they're going to be displayed and have pink lights. And so it's just another thing and another way for the real men to celebrate what they're representing.
That's awesome. Mayor, can I unofficially make a motion that we support that? Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to unofficially make a motion that we support the initiative for real men wear pink on the steps of City Hall.
Did you say unofficially make a motion?
Well, unofficially or officially.
Well, if you said unofficially, you just made the unofficial motion. If you'd like to make a motion, I'd be obliged to acknowledge it when we get to the... When we get to the policy agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Glavin, does that conclude your comments?
It does. Thank you.
Well, we will move to citizens'... I'm sorry, I have a couple of comments. Did Ms. Labata, is she here tonight? Ms. Labata, if you would, state your name and your position for the record for me.
Christie Labata, city engineer.
The contract for the cleanup, can you tell me about it? Did they start that today?
I did not check with Roberts to see if they did or not. They told us they're going to start either today or tomorrow. I will text him right now and see if they got started and I'll let you know for the meeting.
You sent me the locations that I requested. I got that yesterday, but I wasn't able to get time to get the flyers printed to let people know what to do. Can we make sure, Mr. Mayor, that we let the people on Darwood, Rustwood, Camp Wilkes, and Trailwood rake up the rocks and the debris from that street project so the team that's coming through to pick it up can pick it up? Thank you. And now we'll move on to citizens' comments. We have 45 minutes total time allotted. That's going to be three minutes per person, so everyone has the opportunity to speak. I'm going to start with my left-hand side or your right-hand side of the room. If you would, please come to the forward, come to the table, state your name and address for the record and sign in for me. If there's anyone?
Hello. My name is Sabrina May again. In the last two weeks that I came here, I asked for a confirmed date to meet with the... Well, you told me I need to meet with my second ward mayor, which is Phoebe Liskins. I haven't got a date. I haven't got a phone call back from the chief. I haven't got nothing, you know, pouring out. We'd had two more shootings in the city of Biloxi involving teenagers. I don't know what else to do. I mean, I'm coming up here, I'm crying, I'm trying. I'm out there, like I say, I'm walking these streets. I'm in these streets. So I'm trying. I'm trying to do everything I can do. I'm asking. I have just no more than I can do than to ask because I don't have the power, you know, to do what need to be done. But as I say, the chief is here. He know because they get the phone calls. One of them was my stepmother. Her house got shot in 17 times, you know? And these not no regular guns. These are automatic AKs and all this. I mean, the problem is started getting worse and worse. And it's getting, I mean, as you can see on the news all around, it's juveniles, it's kids. It's getting worse and worse. All them asking is that we can get a confirmed meeting and we can sit down for... Our councilman or our chief or whoever can come talk, come to the city, come where it needs to be. They need to be heard, need to be seen. Their presence need to be there in the community. Well, we, I keep asking for because I can't do it. But like I say, it's a big problem. And it might not matter to nobody, but it matters. These are children we watched grow up. Some of them, and some of them not. They coming from different hoods. They got the gang rivals going on. They got different things going on. And when one come and shoot, the other retaliate and it just keep going and keep going and keep going. But if you check the records, the ages is getting younger. They going from 18, 19 to 13, 12, and further on. So therefore, I'm just saying, it's a problem. And it's a problem that needs to be addressed.
I didn't catch your name.
Sabrina May.
You said May?
Yes, yes, sir. M-A-Y.
Thank you, Ms. May. Who has your contact information? Does Mr.?
Phoebe Liskins.
Okay, thank you.
And Chief Miller. We Facebook friends and we neighbors.
Ms. May?
He has my information. Well, I can leave it.
Yes, ma'am. If you would, see me, the chief, or Mr. Guines at the end, if you'd leave us your contact information.
Okay.
There you go.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. May. Do I have anybody else on the left-hand side? My left hand, your right-hand side of the room? If you would, state your name and address and please sign in.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jeremy McCarty. I would like to read a piece of literature I put off the internet. It says, "On June 28, 2020, the legislature passed a bill, House Bill 1796, that would relinquish the state flag, remove the state flag from public buildings within 15 days of their effective date." So with that being said, I have a picture. As we all know, Oscarinda has been in Biloxi for years. So I work in the construction field, so I'm guessing this is the project manager. But on this picture, I don't know how I can get y'all to see it, but I have the picture. On this particular picture... Excuse me for a second. Excuse me, please. Excuse me. The last, the digits, it's a Ford F-150. The license plate number is JRF2606. And it's the older Caucasian male. But on the front of the truck, I'm looking for the picture. I thought I had snapshotted and saved it in my favorites, but I'm trying to find it. And I thank y'all for y'all time and patience. On this picture, with the taxpayers' money, he's riding around with a rubber flag representing the city of Biloxi with a rubber flag on the front of his truck in a predominantly black community. It's an insult and it's also a slap in the face and it's also very disrespectful because this flag, which was voted, I just read the bill that was passed, the removal. So he's... They're not contracted under private money. They're contracted under the city of Biloxi's money. This needs to come off of his vehicle. This is a sign of hatred and it's very disrespectful to the residents of Ward 2. The second thing I would like to say, and I was hearing you speak to Ms. Labata. I was hearing you speak to Ms. Labata about cleaning up, about a cleanup project. Ward 2 is in serious trouble. It's drug infested. It's gang infested. And just like Ms. Sabrina May said, I also have pictures of the guns. These are not regular guns. These are what special forces soldiers have. I have a associate's degree in law and homeland security and I went back the next year and I got my bachelor's degree in civil law in 17 months. And every quarter, I graduated on the dean's list and I'm getting ready to pursue my degree, my juric doctorate. These are... These guns, the police don't even have them. They have 50 and 100 round drums and magazines. And this is what's going on. And I feel as though law enforcement, I know that they are doing somewhat, but it's not enough. What?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Mr. Williams, if you would state your name and your address for the record?
Maurice Williams, Charler Lane, Ward 2. I have a few things I want to talk about. I didn't hear the community center mentioned at all this week, but I have a few questions because I don't like how it's being planned out. Frankly, somehow, we managed to pick the only block in Ward 2 that already had a community center on it and decided to build a new one. I don't really see the logic behind that. These aren't fast food restaurants. They're community centers. There's no reason to really push for competition. I know there's a few other places in Ward 2 we can put them. You know, there's space in Ward 1, which I understand why our councilmen might see that as a conflict. But nonetheless, I would like to see something done. Personally, I like the Mercy Cross property. There's already a gymnasium out there. We can just do maybe a facility from the ground up. There's room to work, but I don't think the property on Lee Street is very reasonable considering there's already a community center on that block. Also, I want to know what else we're doing as far as funding. From my understanding, we only have $500,000 approved and that's frankly laughable. $500,000 is enough for a nice house, but not a community center. So I would like to just kind of hear more about what we plan on doing Um, so I would like to just kind of hear more about what we plan on doing as far as getting the funding for that, because we're rushing these companies to get this stuff off the property, as if we're gonna break the ground tomorrow. But frankly, we don't have the money or the plans to really put the community center in place. So unless there's something we're not hearing, I'd definitely like to hear a little more about that plan. And, um, I kind of want to touch on something that was already just touched on, actually, uh, you told us two or three weeks ago we'd have a ward meeting, and, um, no one's heard anything else about it. And it's starting to feel like you're really pacifying the citizens of Ward Two. Um, we'd like to have an open dialogue with, uh, not just you, really a lot of other people, but Councilmen Gines, we definitely need to have a dialogue that's open in Ward Two. You can hear people are distraught, they're upset, they're not okay with what's going on, and, and it feels like you're just pacifying us, to be honest. Um, it's disrespectful, and it feels like you forget that we're your boss. We vote you into that seat, and you're kind of acting like you don't care. Let's, let's get a date on a meeting. Um, that's, that's really all I have to say. To the rest of the council, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? If you would, please state your name and address, and sign in for me.
Good evening. James Alexander from Belmont Gardens, up in Leopard District Two, Ward's. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right. And you can grab the microphone if you.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you. My name is James Alexander, I'm from Belmont Gardens, up in Ward Six. We have a acute problem with both lack of ma, management and maintenance. Uh, I've spoken to over a dozen apartment complexes, they all state the minimum requirement is one full-time staff for the office and one full-time staff for maintenance. On a good week, we have half a day from the office, there's absolutely no maintenance whatsoever. When a vendor or contractor pays the property a visit, they're not escorted, and therefore, whereas senior community, as we're aware, there's a lot of crimes against seniors, so I can presume that the management concept of seniors' lives don't matter. We have a heavy infestation of snakes. Their idea is these poison snakes are, what do you want us to do? They have a, and I had a fine talk with the deputy chief of police this afternoon, it was very productive, um, where they want us to, different laws that are questionable. Um, they have a courtesy officer who's not on the Biloxi Police Department, so he has no jurisdiction of any kind. The mainest, lack of it is causing different problems and hardships. The lack of accessibility to management is causing issues. There's safety issues, and we'd really appreciate if we can get with the Ward Six or the council and have things adjusted there. Please.
Mr. Alexander, Kenny Glavin is here, he is the councilman for Ward Six, so I'm sure he'd be happy to meet with you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Do I have anybody else on the right-hand side of the room?
I'm sorry, I have one hour left. I apologize. They've also instituted a, a no parking restriction, availability for those who are handicapped. They've taken down all the handicap parking signs, and issued a memo that includes, "Moving forward, management will not be able to provide reserved parking for any reason. Unfortunately, requests has caused a hardship on the property management residents." So they've, disregarding eighty-eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have anybody on the left-hand side of the room, my right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? If you would, sir, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Uh, my name is Brian Bowns. I actually live in Ocean Springs, but I wanted to let y'all know of, um, of what we offer. Um, we, I have a company that specializes in bio-threat protection, and I've got some flyers here, but I just want to give y'all a, a little, just in the timeframe that we are right now, and I realize this is, I'm not trying to sell anything, but I just want to let y'all know that there's, um, a service that's available that will offer up to ninety days protection on surfaces against microorganisms, viruses, bacteria, um, that will, you know, that...
Mr. Mike, Mr. Leonard, I apologize, but it's, your conversation is carrying up here, and it's making it hard for us to understand him. If you guys would take that outside, thank you. Would you please continue?
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. And that was probably muffled it too, but, um, so anyway, I have a company that's called Evo Armor. Uh, we're a local company that we offer bio-threat protection services. And we can offer up to ninety days protection on, on surfaces against cross-contaminations, against, uh, microorganisms, bacteria, viruses. Uh, we've already doing some work with City of Goshay, Ocean Springs, University of Southern Mississippi, um, got a lot of good things going to be able to help in this pandemic that we're in. I just wanted to let y'all know really about the education of it, and I'm available if anybody wants to talk. I'll, I'll leave a couple of, if it's okay for me to leave that, I will leave these right here, and for, and there should be enough for each of the ward members to be able to have, and y'all can contact me.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for coming. Is there anybody else on the right-hand side of the room that would care to speak? Or your left-hand side of the room? Anyone in the back? There being none, citizens comments will be concluded. I do have one last thing that I didn't state in my, my, uh, citizens, I mean, in my council report, Mr. Mayor. I know we have our, our, um, public library, Ms. Davis, she's here, and she's expressed some concern about some, some mold on the exterior of the Market Street Library. Is there a way, do we have, can Public Works pressure wash that, or do we need to hire a contractor?
We can address that.
We can, okay. Thank you. Now we'll move on to, uh, policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance to amend Section nine-one-twenty-two of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to garbage collection and disposable fees.
This was originally moved by Team Lawrence Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence, discussion?
Mike, you can, uh, all we did, we put the numbers in here now, it's twenty-two cents increase, and eight, eight cents increase for the, uh, you call it the garbage fee for the landfill. So you're actually adding thirty cents to the four-eighty. So the, the price now would be fifteen-ten per month for the garbage.
That's correct. That, that, that covers us for the fee that the HCUA charges us to, a disposal fee, and a, a can fee, and Pelican Wastes picks up the debris. All of that adds up to fifteen dollars and two cents. We add eight cents to that for administrative fee, so it's fifteen-ten.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody had the correct number from last time, with ninety-seven cents.
Right.
So now you actually...
Yeah, I apologize for that. Uh, two or three meetings ago, we put an ordinance in, in play that said fifteen-seventy-seven, which is the number we were given. You pushed back, I thank you for that, because we just have to fix it later anyway. We went back to the HCUA and realized that they were charging, they were doing a pass-through to us on the dumpsters that are sitting around the city and commercial properties and so forth. So we, we can't pass that on to residents. So when we ripped that out, got a new price for them, and it came out to the fifteen-oh-two plus the eight cents.
So now, actually, the original fee...
That's a six-year contract, and there's, uh, escalation built into each year, so this is not the end of the, the line for us.
But we did save sixty-seven cents per.
You're saying, but the fee is now twenty-two cents for the garbage, correct?
Thirty, thirty cents more to the...
Well, twenty-two cents for the garbage, eight cents. I don't know, y'all said something about the landfill, maybe a price for that, so that's where the thirty cents comes from. But the garbage collecting fee itself has only gone up twenty-two cents per can. And then eight cents is a adjustment fee for the landfill, so it comes a total of thirty cents.
Councilman Tisdale?
I can't add anything to that.
Councilman Barrett?
Nothing.
Councilman Gines? Councilman Glavin?
Good.
Councilwoman Newman? I guess I'll call for the question, all in favor? Motion carries six-one, I'm the only one in opposition. We'll move to Resolution B.
Resolution in support of local and private legislation authorizing the operation of low-speed vehicles on the roads, streets, and avenues of the city of Biloxi.
So moved.
I've got a motion by George Lawrence.
I'll second.
Seconded by Felix Gines. For the record, when I said six-one, I'm the only one in opposition, it was Demming. Just, just had to put it on the record that it was my name. The first one, correct. Councilman Gines, seconded for B. Councilman Lawrence moved it.
Moved it.
Mr. Lawrence, discussion?
Mr. Mike, you explained that this is the first step we have to take to try to approve some of the things we're looking forward to doing with the, like the golf cart, these smaller vehicles.
Yes, sir. Uh, Peter Abad, city attorney. This is in response to, um, uh, particular prior meetings when we wanted to look into how could, um, how could the city of Biloxi, uh, introduce low-speed golf cart-type vehicles in certain areas? Uh, we've looked at other cities that have done it, Ocean Springs, Bay St. Louis, and right now, there's a requirement that you have to ask the legislature for permission to allow them in your city. And what this resolution does is, we just track the prior resolutions and legislation that other cities have used. If this passes, and we think it should, in the next session in January, we'll now then come back to the council and have a specific ordinance for the golf carts, stating, and we can debate where and, when and where to have them, and where they shouldn't be. There's certain areas we think they should not be, but essentially, it's, uh, the first step to getting this, getting this started for next year.
Councilman Gines?
Yeah, I think this is a, a good opportunity. I think we talked about this before. We talked about this before, and it's a way of spurring growth and spurring the economy. Besides, I have a golf cart.
Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, I, I have some concerns. My first concern is that, uh, who determines whether these vehicles can exceed twenty-five miles an hour or not? How is that determined, or who's gonna check it, or?
I'm not, I'm not a golf cart expert, I just...
Nor am I.
Play on the weekends, but, um, I, I think, I think most golf carts have governors, they have to be street legal. These golf carts are gonna have, uh, seat belts, and, uh, the general, the general principle in most every, uh, legislation is, if the speed limit on the street is twenty-five miles an hour, if it's more than twenty-five miles an hour, golf cart's not really allowed on that street. So it's, um, they're fairly, fairly much restricted to that, and if somebody has a super-fast golf cart, I mean, I guess we'll have to, we deal with that as, as it comes up.
My, my next question is, what streets are we gonna permit these golf carts, or what areas of the city to operate?
Mr. Tisdale, I think that's a discussion for a later date. I think this is just to give us permission to address that. Right now, we haven't, I don't think we've been proposed by, um, the question of what streets will this go on. It's just general approval to allow us to do it.
I understand that, but, but given that, I still have those questions, I, I can't vote in support of that at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, I think this is a great idea. Uh, I mean, you see it in Bay St. Louis, you've, you've actually seen it in Biloxi with some special events. I've seen a golf cart, uh, crew, if you will, kind of enjoy the, the event that we've held from time to time. Uh, it opens up, uh, local tourism, opens visitor tourism, and some entrepreneurs out there that want to get creative, uh, can certainly, uh, start a business that, uh, is unique. And, um, I don't know why we wouldn't, we're a tourism town, we're open for business, let's roll.
No pun intended. Councilwoman Newman?
Just to verify, being street legal means no kids are gonna be able to just play horse around on these golf carts, correct?
Right. You've gotta have a valid driver's license, you've got to, um, uh, have a decal of some sort, and all these laws say you have to have your certificate of insurance somewhere with you when you're, when you're driving. So if someone underage or without a driver's license is driving, they're subject to being ticketed, just as if they were a normal vehicle. You know, any of the other cities that have done this at this stage, they don't lay out all the ordinances and the principles. This is to give us the right to even pass an ordinance. We could, we could start debating and have it already, but until the legislature says we even have the right to do it, uh, we can't do it. There was actually, the House this year passed a blanket ordinance, they were getting tired of so many cities coming up with all these local impravits every year, and they were just going to allow the cities the right to do it on proper ordinance. And that passed in the House and failed in the Senate. So we're still at the point where we have to do this as a local imprivate, if we were gonna do it.
Councilman Barrett, did you have any discussion?
I think it's a great idea, number one, um, for the downtown area. We'll see people that not only live in the area, but people that are from outside the area will bring their golf carts to hang out on the weekends, help business, it'll help build downtown back, and bring some, um, some life to it on the weekends. Uh, number two, um, the golf carts are already in the neighborhoods, and this gives us some kind of oversight. Um, I live in Eagle Point, very large neighborhood, they're everywhere. And, um, sometimes there's people on those golf carts at night that don't need to be on them, they're too young to understand the rules of the road, and this will give some oversight, and we'll have, you know, some legislation in place that allows us to enforce, you know, certain laws, like you have to have a driver's license, it has to be street legal. So I think, all around, it's a great move.
I think last is just my discussion. I have, um, my ward, obviously, the majority of my ward is in a, in a golf cart, a golf community, and so there's a lot of proponents and a lot of advocates for this, so I look forward to coming to the table, if we are blessed with the authority to do this by the legislature, to discuss how we move forward with these rules and regulations. That being said, I call for the question, all in favor, signal the raise of your hand, please. It was six-four, all against?
Six-four.
Six-four, six pro. One against, one nay, six yay, one nay.
Nay.
Paul Tisdale is the only one in opposition. We'll move to Resolution B, I, I mean, excuse me, we'll move to consent agenda, I think it was printed out of order, is, just for clarification, is Resolution A that is subsequent to B? Is that part of the consent agenda, or is that? Mississippi power, is that supposed to be on consent?
I think it's the consent agenda.
Or is...
Just the consent agenda.
But I was gonna say, I think it was printed out of order.
Yes, and I'm hearing it showing.
I, I get that, but if you look at it, A is printed, and then consent agenda is after, and consent agenda actually starts with B, it's listed in the resolution section.
That is correct.
Well, I'm looking at a computer screen, so you guys are looking at something printed, it's fine.
Play it anywhere you want.
I'll make a motion on the consent agenda.
The consent agenda is moved by...
I'm moved.
I'll second it.
Nathan Barrett, seconded by Paul Tisdale.
Y'all a little slow on the whole, and they, you're arguing about something.
Councilman Barrett, your discussion?
Um, the on, only question I had is, let me get the... Um, could someone explain in to me? In as in Nancy.
Which one is it?
In as in Nancy.
Right. And you, as you recall, Councilman, we have about a half million dollars in play to incentivize people to build apartments or houses in the downtown area. This is one of the earlier ones that was approved.
Okay.
Uh, it's two, two, two units at the old, they call its house the old Swetman Drug Store.
Twenty-five for, that's why I was asking.
Twenty-five each.
Twenty-five for each unit.
Each, and, uh, they...
Okay. That's all I have.
Up to twenty-five, okay.
It's the only question I have.
And they finished now and ready to collect.
All right. That's all I have.
Tisdale?
Yes, on item S, this was, uh, something we added to the agenda, deals with the surplus sale. Do we have a location for that? I, I believe there was a date in the resolution.
It is, and we apologize for being late to getting to the agenda on this one, but we just got the contract from the auctioneer. It's the same auctioneer we've used, uh, the last four years that I'm aware of, to, we, we do an auction about every other year. It's usually staged, to get to your question, uh, at the, at the police and fire, um...
Maintenance and communications area, where the new fire station is?
Correct, and out back behind there. And, um, they line all the vehicles up, and it's, uh, it's all, it's all held on a Saturday. That'll be Saturday, the nineteenth of September. What, one of the things that you're seeing is anything that we're gonna auction off has to be declared surplus, so there've been a series of resolutions over the last couple of meetings declaring items surplus. Those are, those are the items that are being put, gotten ready for the, for the, um, auction.
Thank you. That's all I had, thank you. Uh, Mr. Philipage? Can you verify that Mr. Demming can read that?
By the way, that auction, it, it's a real live auctioneer that does the, uh, fast talk.
Thank you for acknowledging the fact that I'm not insane yet. And I do say yet, um, does that conclude your...
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Newman, do you have anything to discuss on the consent agenda? Councilman Glavin?
Nothing.
Councilman Gines? If you would, please. Oh, no, I'm sorry. And I have nothing to address. I'll call... I was trying to get out of it. Mr. Lawrence?
Just 'cause you was confused with the agenda, you know, I was ready. You all right? Now, you happy now? Everything straight?
Are you gonna?
All right. First one, E. I'm totally against anything you attach into the seawall, period.
Well, we're not asking you to vote on a seawall, Councilman.
No, you're not doing that, but you pay.
We're just asking you to vote on a resolution decreasing the amount we're paying for the A and E fee by $1,000.
I understand that, but it all leads to that. You wanna do the board book, fine. You do it on another sidewalk, you can do what you want. Don't attach anything to the seawall. Been sitting there since 1928, 92 years. Anything that ever attached to the seawall a few years ago, first hurricane took it all off. Don't attach anything to the seawall. You got plenty of room. Add another sidewalk, inside a sidewalk here, if you want a water, six, seven feet. I'm just saying. So can't support anything that's gonna do anything to the seawall. That's the best bulkhead we've had. Once they started building in 1923, finished in 1928. It did exactly what it's supposed to do for the city of Biloxi. Saved it. So, anyway, just wanna let you know, totally against attaching anything to the seawall. So I'm definitely not supporting that. I don't mind the $1,000 we saving, unless we do something else with the money. They have this one here, we were sending on I, and it said something about a bad pole. You were sending, what are you rescinding?
This is a, you wanna do it? Small cell. It's the small cell. Well, it's the AT&amp;T wanted to do these small cell towers, and they, they, we, we previously approved putting one down here on, was it Cod in the beach? At Bayview, and they've changed their mind.
Okay.
We didn't think it was a good idea in the first place.
That's it, Mr. Agenda.
I'll call for the question, then. All in favor? Signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously for the consent agenda. Is there anybody in opposition to any of the items in the consent agenda? There being none, we'll move forward to...
Yeah, I'm in E.
I'm sorry?
I guess E.
E. Councilman Lawrence does oppose item E of the consent agenda. We'll move forward to the code enforcement hearings.
Jerry Creel, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Creel.
First case on the agenda, item A, Deborah J. Davis, 157 Crawford Street. This property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Deborah J. Davis or 157 Crawford Street? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item B, Ethel J. Murdoch, 329 Pops Ferry Road. This property's still in violation. The violation on this is that the house is open. It's not secured, and all we're asking to do is to be able to secure the structure.
Okay, thank you. That was gonna be my question. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Ethel J. Murdoch, 329 Pops Ferry Road? There being none, this hearing is closed. I'll ask for a motion on the routine agenda.
Load.
A motion by George Lawrence and a second by Paul Tisdale. Discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Walt, we got any news at all this week?
All good news, Councilman. At the last council meeting, I told you we would have some money in the pipeline, and we do. We have 1.39 million. We should receive it by mid-September, so hopefully at our next council meeting, I'll be able to tell you it's in our bank accounts.
Is this the money that you're going after with the three resolutions we passed, or is this different money?
It's the reimbursement of bills that we've already paid already.
Yeah, 'cause I said that was 1.3 million, too. So that's, that's the same money.
Yes, sir.
Right. So that's good that we're doing it. One question. On Forest Avenue, they are moving all the poles off the sidewalk, the telephone company. Is that the only street they're gonna do like that?
No, they're, they're planning on shifting some poles over on Howard Avenue between Porter and Benaki. There's a plan to get them out of the sidewalks and be able to make it more accessible to pedestrians. And eventually, the power company plans to go at least all the way down to Cod that.
They didn't have a problem because they wasn't, they wasn't handicapped accessible.
Yes, sir, and that's why, and they're moving them. We requested them make them more accessible to our pedestrians.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey. Do you have any further discussion? Councilman Tisdale, discussion on the routine agenda?
Not a thing.
Is there any discussion on the board at this time?
I would like to make a non-routine motion.
Well, I was gonna ask you, what I think we should do is charge the council or the mayor to present a motion to acknowledge the event that you want us to formally acknowledge.
Okay.
So...
Want me to charge? Oh, we need to close the routine? Let's close the routine.
All in favor of the routine agenda? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Glavin, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to charge the mayor with authorizing the city of Biloxi to become a pink partner with Real Men Wear Pink and the American Cancer Society to allow them to place illuminated bags on the city, city hall steps in memory of those who are fighting or have succumbed to breast cancer.
I'll second that, if we need that.
I don't think we need to. We're charging the mayor. The mayor will present us with...
Yeah, we'll do that.
A resolution. Mr. Mayor, I know you have some consideration. You asked the council...
We'd ask that tonight, we close the meeting in memory of Mr. Kenneth Kenny Lamy. He was a second-generation volunteer firefighter at Back Bay, one of the original Back Bay Host Company Number Four, longtime board member of the Biloxi Fire Museum. He, Mr. Lamy, died August 29th, and he was at the age of 95. On Wednesday, honorary pallbearers from the Biloxi Fire Department will transport Mr. Lamy's casket in Biloxi Fire Truck from Blessed Selos Catholic Church to Biloxi National Cemetery. He started the Back Bay Host Company Number Four in 1946. It was active when the company, till it disbanded in the 80s, in the late 80s. Kenny Lamy loved and served Biloxi in his Biloxi Fire Department, and we send our condolences to the family.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please convey our condolences and our appreciation for his services to his family as the council. I would like to move to close the meeting in honor of Mr. Kenny Lamy.
Second.
Second, huh?
We all second.
I have a unanimous second. We did. Motion to adjourn in the name of, in the honor of Kenny Lamy. All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. We are in recess. I did move for a motion to adjourn, but it was to recess.